Good evening, welcome to the November 18th, 2015 Board of Education meeting. We've been in executive session since 6:00 PM discussing a personnel matter. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How many students are here, participation in government students? Okay. Your requirement is to stay till 9 o'clock. If we're still having the meeting at 9, we'll take a break. You'll need to come up and sign out. And if you have any forms that the board members need to sign for you, we'll do that. If the meeting gets over before then, just come up at that time and sign up. Introductions?
Michael Cooper.
Joanne Cunningham.
Diane Steever.
Dave Hurst.
Jody Monroe.
Matt Downey.
Charmaine Woodgesinger.
Lynn Lenhart.
Christine Back.
And Judy Keigho.
Okay. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the November 4th, 2015 regular board meeting.
So move.
Second.
That's the first and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries? Do we have a representative from the Student Senate here this evening? No? Okay. Maybe they'll come in a little later. Next, the interim superintendents report. Ms. Monroe?
Good evening. I wanted to recognize we had four student athletes yesterday. Perhaps you saw it on the news, there's a story on the website, who signed their National Letter of Intent to play Division One sports next year in college. We had a small ceremony, their parents were there, and if you saw, many of the local news stations were there to recognize them, so congratulations. Also yesterday, thank you Lynn, was National School-Related Professionals Day, so I'd like to take a moment to recognize all of our related, professional-related staff. They seem to change it each year. For all their commitment to our students and really supporting all of the things that the district does every single day, from getting the kids on the buses, to the lunches we serve, and keeping the buildings clean, and all the clerical staff who assist. So, thank you to them. And now I'd like to recognize a couple of our staff members who I see are sitting in the audience, so maybe if you guys could stand, come on up here and I'll...
Present an eagle pin?
Yes. Ms. Vincent and Ms. Nolan, if you could stand and come up here, and you're going to get an eagle pin tonight. So let me tell you why we're recognizing both of these individuals. So, phys ed teacher Lori Nolan will travel to Central New York this month to be honored by her peers for earning a spot on the jump rope for heart and hoops for heart top-10 list for New York State. The New York State Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation and Dance will honor Lori as part of their annual Amazing People Award Ceremony, which recognizes individual contributions to improving the lives of others and supporting quality, health education, and physical education programs. Lori introduced hoops for heart, an educational and fundraising program designed to educate children about heart health, to Glenmont more than 17 years ago. Since that time, she has helped the Glenmont community raise more than $300,000 for the American Heart Association. So, congratulations Lori. And next, Fran Vincent is being honored as the 2015 New York State Health Teacher of the Year by New York State Association of Health, Physical Education, Recreation and Dance. Fran has presented numerous workshops at the annual conference and Capital Zone Conferences, and was a member of the New York State Health Leadership Institute. Fran is being recognized for her commitment to teaching students to become healthy, active adults, and educating her peers in the skills-based approach to teaching health education. I think we all know Fran's also a USA triathlon certified Level 1 coach, star 2 spinning instructor, and Cooper Institute certified fitness instructor. In her spare time, she teaches spinning at the YMCA, coaches triathletes, and competes herself. She has qualified and competed in the 2013 and 15 Ironman National World Championships in Kona, Hawaii. In 2013, Fran finished fifth in her age group. She was also recognized previously as a Capital Zone amazing teacher. So, congratulations Fran to both of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Next, Board of Education report. I'd like to start out by recognizing the two teachers tonight, and not just for the students, but their role models for the community, as mentioned. You know, Fran is a triathlon instructor. I've actually gone through her program at the Y. She's gotten a lot of people in this community involved in triathlon, and also into spinning, so keep up the good work. Anyone else have anything?
Just to talk about, Mr. Petritoni took over 100 kids to Gettysburg and Washington, DC over the Veterans Day break. It was four days, so I give him a lot of credit for taking 100 kids. A lot of teachers gave up some time to go with him, and it was a good experience. My son had a great time, got to see the Lincoln Memorial, the battlefield, some things that we haven't been able to take him to see yet, so I hope they continue that next year for the next incoming 7th and 8th grade class.
Mike?
I was able to attend the Talking to Your Teens presentation at the high school last week, and it was packed, and it got lots of news coverage. It was an incredibly powerful presentation, especially there was a young man who was there and talked about his road down, trip down the road to heroin addiction, and I think it really made a powerful statement to the kids. And I just want to thank everybody at BOU and at the district who helped put that together. And the one thing I wanted to just mention is, one of the big points they made was that your kids are never too young to start those discussions about alcohol and drugs. As we know, kids are experimenting younger and younger as the years go on, and there were a lot of good tips given on how you can approach your child and talk about it. And I believe all that material is on the BOU website, so congratulations to everybody who was involved in that.
It's my understanding too that some of the high school health classes are continuing that discussion. I know that my daughter's a sophomore in a health class, and she's saying that some people are coming in this week to talk to them one-on-one, so...
And we're also, the high school, I know with Kathy Johnston, Scott, Joanne Benrath, and I are working on doing something for the spring to do some training with staff, do some follow-up with students, and again, something for families that might be useful, so...
Well, that's great, because I think, you know, it's such a serious problem all over, but especially in Albany County, for some reason, and a lot of times it's going from the pain drugs to heroin when the prescription ends. And, you know, it's happens to people that, you know, you would never expect something to happen to, and I think that's what scares people. So I think it's great that so many were able to attend, and hopefully that's helpful, you know, to families, you know, maybe in preventing some of those tragedies that have occurred. On a positive note, attended the Veterans Assembly, Charmaine was there too, at Slender Linds for Veterans Day, and they did a wonderful job. The 4th graders basically put on the show. And the students were so, I think my husband who spoke at it as a veteran, was so shocked that the whole school was sitting there, and Slender Linds is one of our bigger schools, and the students sat there, you know, and were so good, you know, not moving around. I said, "I'm not sure what it was," but they did a great job in honoring the veterans, so really enjoyed that. And then, a couple of us were at the character breakfast at the middle school, again, recognizing students for doing things that, you know, when, doing the right thing when no one else is really noticing what they're doing, and that is always great, too. And I'm more looking forward statewide in terms of legislation. The ECB put out a report on what they feel the amount of state aid should be, and this is all the educational constituencies throughout the state. I think I mentioned it before, but anyhow, that 2.2 billion is really important for us to, you know, push for in the legislature. Some of that's aid, some of it's getting rid of the GEA, some of it's to help some of our struggling districts that are under receivership but are not receiving any aid. The 20 worst ones received aid, and the others are just struggling to meet the requirements under the receivership. So we need to keep watching that. And the same thing with the ESEA reauthorization at the national level. They do have a conference committee, and now mind you, it's been, let me see, 2,000, eight years overdue to reauthorize what was, what is called No Child Left Behind. This is the Elementary and Secretary of Education Act, and they're finally seem to be wanting to do something before the end of this congressional session. So the committee has just been, the conference committee has just been set up for it. So please watch that if there's any opportunity to contact our senators or our congressman, Congressman Tonko, you know, we should do so. And the only other thing is, I had spoken for a task force on the Common Core learning standards, and the commissioner really is looking for people's input on the learning standards, and there's, on the stated website, a link to actually taking a survey on the standards. Now they have all the standards, they have over 2,000 standards on there. Even if you only, I mean, they're encouraging board members, and especially staff, to do it, so ones that pertain to them, at least look at those and make any recommendations for changes. But if, even if you can do some input on that, I think they're closing that survey on November 30th. And I assume our staff is going to be filling them.
Have you done it?
I haven't done it yet, because I know it's going to take a while.
I brought it up the other night, and, you know, I know, like, we have tomorrow, Friday slated, but they were just saying it's impossible to do, and it's really difficult to navigate through it, so...
It's, well, I think that's why the commissioner was encouraging superintendents actually to spend some time at faculty meetings to doing it.
It's too hard for you, so it happens to the superintendents.
Again, I think the commissioner had, again, knew that everybody wouldn't be able to address every standard, but the standards that they teach to every day, they should at least look at those, and they're looking back, looking for the feedback. And I think the suggestion was, use your faculty meeting time to give them time to do the online, to be able to do it, because it is time-consuming, and they don't have time during the day.
Right, and that, we're going to be doing that Friday, but I haven't looked at it yet, but I heard from people that have looked at it, it's not that easy to navigate.
But it is an opportunity to provide feedback.
Right.
This is one, the education commissioner is looking for that from the education community, so...
I just wanted to thank Mrs. Nolan for the hoops for heart program, too. I had two kids participate in the hoops for heart, and it's a very near and dear cause to me. My husband had a heart attack when he was 36, so she does a great job of engaging the children here to continue to participate in it. Every year they get very excited about participating, so I just want to let you know, I appreciate it, and it's a great cause.
Yes, Charmaine.
I know Mr. Landry sent us the text of an announcement he made after the attacks in Paris, and I just want to affirm him for doing, for telling a story. I think he did. He said, I saw it.
I didn't. Maybe because you have a student at school.
Oh, maybe, okay, well, so, no, was it S and N? I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
Because I don't get on, I don't get on Aspen. I didn't say that. But I got an S and N, a text of it, so maybe it's because I have a high school student, but, you know, again, the one person speaking up says louder than 1,000 people who remain silent. And just to reaffirm for the students that, you know, things happen in the world, but it's so important to keep an open mind, so I just want to thank him for that.
And then, one last thing. Tomorrow night, I know the Kepleria School Boards Association is having a meeting. I'll be attending, and I believe a couple administrators are going to, and it's focusing on Medicaid funding and reviewing that, and regulations, and how we may be able to improve recruitment of money, so... Next is a presentation for this evening. We have a presentation tonight on the Bethlehem Central's Elementary Physical Education Program, presented by Ms. Laura Hefferman from the Glenmont Principal, Mr. Fred Powers, a physical education and health supervisor for K through 12. And before they begin, I would like to recognize Laura tonight for hosting the Board of Education meeting here at Glenmont. Thank you to you and your staff. Last year, the board, actually, it's two years now, this is, we're in our second year of doing it, the board, as one of our goals was to get out and go to each of the buildings and host a meeting at each of the buildings throughout the district, so that we got to experience, you know, and have a conversation with the administration in each of those buildings. So, it's been very productive, I think, for the board. Thank you.
We're talking today about our Elementary Physical Education Program. As the Board of Ed mentioned, they traveled around to the different elementary schools, and so we're trying to share with the board and the community different facets of our curriculum at the elementary level. So tonight, we're talking about physical education with Fred Powers, our supervisor. And it is not November 23rd, don't worry, it's not quite Thanksgiving yet, sorry about that. There we go. So the goal of physical education is to develop physically literate individuals who have the knowledge, skills, and confidence to enjoy a lifetime of healthful physical activity. This is so important, especially in this age of screens and technology, and we want to make sure that our children are being, have time to play, to develop their muscles and their skills, and to become physically fit and literate, and how to do this for their whole lifetime. So, physical education informs intellectual, affective, and physical development. It correlates with academic achievement. Many studies have shown this over and over again, and it's fundamental to expression, enjoyment, and enrichment. And I'm going to turn the rest of the presentation over to Mr. Powers, who is an expert in this. So, Mr. Powers, come on up.
Thank you. I just want to highlight the information regarding correlating to academic achievement. Over the last 10 years, there's been quite a bit of studies that came out relating physical activity and fitness to academic achievement. It really underscores the importance of what we do with our students in physical education. You can see our national and state learning standards run fairly congruent, demonstrating competencies in a variety of motor skill and movement patterns, applying knowledge, concepts, principles, strategies, and tactics to movements and performance, demonstrating knowledge and skills to achieve and maintain a health-enhancing level of physical activity and fitness, exhibiting personal and social behaviors, and recognizing the value of physical education, of physical activity for health, enjoyment, challenge, self-expression, and social interaction. I'm going to talk more in-depth on the first three bullets. The fourth bullet, not as much, but I do want to speak that with the personal and social responsibilities, that really permeates through all of what we do. Working with students in terms of their character, civility, citizenship, and sportsmanship, and really all of our activities. The structure of our program, students in K-2 will meet twice a week for 30 minutes a week, and 3 and 4 for 40 minutes, and in Grade 5, they meet for 45 minutes. The underlying basis of, or the ground level of what we do, looking at movement concepts, skills, and health, and health-related fitness, the movement concepts really is spatial awareness, effort, relationships, and skills, and then the individual actions or activities, kind of the basis of what you would think as sport, so throwing and catching, striking with a long-handled implement, and then health-related fitness. So if we look at movement concepts, spatial awareness, effort, and relationships, spatial, spatial awareness, the two basic orientations would be self-space and general space, and that's usually with our kindergarten through 1st grade, or kindergarten through 2nd grade. So teaching students really how to move in open space, how to move with others, so they can then progress to more complex challenges. The effort really refers to time, force, and flow. Time relates to how fast, to how slow the movement is. So if you think about moving in general space, how fast they're going to go, how slow they're going to go. When we look at the force, that's how hard, and then flow is how it moves through the environment. So if we think about how a student in kindergarten moves through open space, we want safe movers. We want them to be able to move, change directions, and do so without bumping into each other. So we really take that as a very base level of instruction. And then, those pieces are really the underlying parts to our theme approach. So, traveling, chasing, fleeing, dodging, jumping, landing, balancing, you can read the pieces, that's really the skilled parts of our curriculum. And those lead into more complex, what would then look like game-type settings, whether it's a soccer, or flag football, or some of the more common activities that you might, that you might understand. An example might be, if we take traveling as a theme, and that comprises movement, we have to travel through general space, and as we progress to more effort, and then we're going to build upon what we look at as pre-control, control, utilization, and proficiency. And we're going to take, we're going to take our skill pieces, and my next slide kind of goes a little bit more in-depth on that. So if you look at the skill theme of chasing, fleeing, and dodging, and we look at what the entry level, or pre-control level would be, students might be make-believe chase. So they're in the gymnasium, big open space, they're moving through the space pretending to be chased, so they might be changing directions, moving fast or slow. As we move to the control level, students usually in 2nd to 3rd grade, they actually are fleeing a chaser, so they're now moving away from somebody, they need to move safely within the gymnasium, they need to slow down, maybe cut to create space between them. And then we start to look at utilization, how do they use those skills in more game-like settings? So they might be dodging and faking moves to avoid a chaser, and then proficiency would be, now we might put an implement in terms of dodging while maintaining possession of an object. So if you think like soccer, students need to be able to move to evade someone trying to take the ball away, so they need to change directions, they need to speed up, slow down. So we sort of tier the instruction as we move to more complex skills. In health-related fitness, we focus on muscular strength and endurance, flexibility, cardiovascular efficiency, and body composition. We do our fitness gram in grades 4 and 5. In terms of the guidelines for movement, students really should be getting 60 minutes a day cumulative of moderate to vigorous activity, and that should be over seven days a week. So when we look at the 60 minutes a day, that can be in 15-minute bouts, or 10-minute bouts, it doesn't have to be a total of 60 minutes in totality. We're the adapted physical education program. We really have three types of settings. There's primary skills and intermediate skills classes, and we do also have small group Students usually going through the referral process, a physical, the physical education teacher, a classroom teacher, might have concerns that they see in the child's movement or a hand-eye manipulation. What they would do at that point would be to modify some of the instruction. They might change the mode, the manipulative that they're working, either making it larger or smaller, they may modify the activity. If those changes don't assess the student, then what they would do is go to make a recommendation to the child's study team, and based on the response from the child's study team, if they were going to look further into making adaptations, and they make a referral to the building principal, which would go to the Committee on Special Education. If approved, we then would do what's called the Test for Gross Motor Development. All of our staff have been trained in that, and then based on the results of the TGMD, there'd be a referral, the student might be either in small group instruction, or they may be in the intermediate or primary skills class. The curriculum is very similar to what we would try to do in our regular instruction, just modified, so we do try to make those, the instructional process, very much like any student would in the regular program. In our intramurals program, we usually go with a 2 to 3 days per week, depending upon the school. We do our intramurals in grades 4 and 5, and it really is an extension of the curriculum. We average about 65 to 90 percent participation in the schools. So the students would usually, we will go 4th grade for half the year, then 5th grade for the second half of the year. Students may get 1 day a week, like Elsmer, they may do 2 days a week, the school's a little bit smaller. So students, 5th grade may get 1 day a week for half-year, 4th grade would get 1 day a week for the second half of the year. And then the program that we would run, again, would be very similar to what we do within our physical education program, so they may be doing small-sided flag football, soccer, they may be doing mat ball or team handball, so they would do some of the activities that the 4th and 5th grades would be doing in the curriculum. Special events run by most of the schools, we have our 5th grade Survivor Day, which has been going on in, for some shape or form for the last 25 years. Originally was our field day, then turned into Survivor Day about 7 or 8 years ago. Field days are at each elementary school. We have the turkey trot and turkey shoots, the walk and bike-to-school day at the schools that can do that. Glenmont is sort of confined by 9W, so it's a little bit of a challenge here. The color run was a successful program we ran last year, and then the hoops for heart, which Lori was just recognized for. That kind of wraps it up. One of my, my observations, I actually live in town in Glenmont, is the elementary school my three children have gone through, and one of the things that really impressed me when I came in to interview 25 years ago was just the type of people that lived here. People were always moving, and I said that to my wife when I came in and interviewed the first time. People were out biking, they were out running, the town parks. And Bethlehem is really a community that values its movement, and I think our physical education program reflects that, and I think our elementary physical education teachers do a wonderful job with creating skillful movers and students that love to move for life. So, thank you. Questions?
One of the first slides had the three different time periods. It says the Elementary Physical Ed Program, where it says K through 2 is 30 minutes, 3 to 4 is 40 minutes, and 5 is 45 minutes. What accounts for the differences in time per, by grade? Does that question make sense?
It does. And interestingly, I was at the meeting this afternoon, happened to have some literature from way back, I think it was Rick McAndrews, from when that actually was put into place, and I think the thought from a primary perspective, that 30 minutes is probably a good enough time, or a long enough time to work with the students. And then with the older students, we do a little bit more complex skills, and it's fairly similar with music as well, in terms of music and art, and very similar in terms of the timeframes.
Okay, thank you.
My question is not actually elementary phys ed, but one of the things that impressed me about the high school phys ed programs was the ability of the high school kids to actually select different, you know, kind of sports or modules or something, and it really, I mean, you know, I had a kid last year that was sick and didn't want to be sick because he didn't want to miss gym.
That's good.
Which was great, and it was because of those units where they get to pick, and I hope those are still going on. I heard there was some modification.
Yeah, this year, Scott Landry had come to us with the change over to Aspen and the student scheduling. There was a bit of a concern on doing student choice, that it's a complicated process the way that we normally had done that. Students would sign up, I would actually have them do it on Lincoln, and then I'd pay my daughter to put it into a spreadsheet, and then I would sit and take the student schedules over the summer.
Right.
And then drop them into their first, 2nd, and 3rd choices, and that's how we did that. And then they would come in, day 1, and then look to see who their friends were, and then they'd want to start switching classes. then they'd want to start switching classes around. So what would happen is that the schedules, the rosters, would be a struggle, they really wouldn't be set a little bit later on. So Scott had a viable concern over that. So this year, what we did in physical education of the high school with our 11th and 12th graders, we looked at the units, and while they got to choose, if they had taken something the first semester of their junior year, we would not let them repeat that. So in theory, they would get variations of, whether it's a team sport, or individual, or lifetime activity, by the time they graduate, they would have that variety of activities. What we did this year was we just took the variety of activities, put it over the course of the year, and students were assigned to teach it. So this year, they don't really have a choice. It's, I think, a struggle for some students and some of the teachers with, whether it's ballroom dance, or whether it's flag football, or yoga, that I think they would prefer to do the selection. And our hope is that, we know that Aspen can handle that, and hopefully we can work to make sure that that comes back for next year.
Yeah, I would encourage you to do that. I mean, I think what we're trying to do is, like we do on the academic side, on the curriculum side, inspire a lifelong love of physical activity. So you sort of had the model there with kids clamoring to participate, and I thought that was fantastic, you know? And, you know, I know it sounds like it's a scheduling dilemma, but to the extent you could figure it out to really maximize the opportunities for kids. I mean, we always say we're all about the kids. Well, you know, if they had something that they were, you know, just jazzed about, and I'd be interested to hear from some of the kids in the audience to see what they thought. I would also encourage us to look at the middle school for the same model, because, you know, if you make it fun, and you make it something they're looking forward to, I mean, who cares what kind of activity it is? I understand, you know, giving them a breadth of choice and whatnot, but I really would encourage you to kind of relook at that choice option. Just wondering if any of you guys in the audience would concur with me, or you like the new model?
Okay, so, well, yeah, I totally agree. Last year, I am a senior now, when we did get to choose which PE class we took, it became less mature, like physical activity saying we wanted to like last with us. So when we get to choose what we want to do, it becomes more fun, so you look forward to it. This year, I do have to say though, there was some leniency, like I had it first period every couple days, and I wanted to say, like, I was put in a big class, and I got one PE teacher, but they did say if one class, there were three PE teachers, if one had too many people choose between a couple of these different curriculums per class, like whether you're doing football or something, there was some leniency to change.
You were period one?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was Mr. Jamao's class?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. You were actually the only class that got that, because he was.
Yeah.
So shh. Mr. Jamao had, I think, 45 students to start with, and the others were lower, so that was the only class.
Yeah, I do see that the PE teachers are trying to make it easier for us, and to enjoy PE too, because they do understand that we do want to enjoy PE, so they do try to make it fun. Even though it's not certain things we want to be doing, they make it fun, so I would like to choose.
That's good to hear. Thank you.
I wanted to ask if you looked at this program at all?
Just because it's an awkward time for females and males to be around each other in swimsuits, you know?
Are you talking at the middle school level?
Middle school and high school level. Just, you know, the girls have to go through the day with wet hair. I know as a high schooler, that would have killed me. Would probably still kill me to go through with wet hair all day. You know, girls sometimes they have to sit on the side of the pool, they have to make up PE class. Have you looked at just making it so that kids that don't know how to swim are required to take that unit? Because there's so many other options out there, I just wanted your thoughts on that, and other board members' thoughts on that as well.
Not so much at the middle school. We do swim all three years, and it's not just girls sitting out. We do, on occasions, have males sitting out as well. And I think that's been the case for ages, that there are the concerns about body image and puberty and everything else. And we try to mitigate those. I mean, students, many of them will come in, and we have t-shirts when they come in and swim. We don't let them wear bikinis, so we try to keep some of that, those issues down. And then in ninth grade, it's a very, we've trimmed the units down. We only swim ninth grade, and we swim for, it's about four weeks that we finish up the swim program. So we do occasionally look at that. I can certainly come back with the staff and take a look at that, but.
I think if you were to pull most girls in the high school, I don't think most would want to swim during the day. Maybe some males too. I can only speak for my gender, but.
Is there a state standard about swimming in high school? Just curious, out of curiosity.
No, actually, they say if you have a pool, then you should be teaching it. I mean, the state doesn't dictate and tell you. You do X, Y, and Z. But they do say if you do have a pool, it should be part of your curriculum. And from our perspective, being drown-proof and being proficient in strokes and swimming is a critical skill. I would hate to see a graduate of our school go out and have something happen that they didn't, they weren't drown-proofed, or knew the basic strokes of swimming. We have rivers, lakes, the ocean's not far away, so it's, as much as it challenges the students, it can multiply by all of them, and as teachers, we get those challenges inherent on a daily basis. But it's a critical skill for them to have.
Go.
I totally agree that it's a critical skill, and I'm just wondering if, like, once they pass a test or something, but I'd really like to, you know, then, you know, definitely, I think every student should learn how to swim, especially if we have the facilities to do that. But I'd be interested to know of how many of the middle schoolers and the ninth graders just really dislike it. I mean, is it, I mean, because I hear the complaints all the time, but it could just be.
Not all, but we do have some that also are appreciative of the stroke improvement and the drown improvement.
So if it could be, you know, like, an elective-type thing. I know going through it, I hated it, and I did everything in my power to get out of it.
What I might suggest is, because we've talked about the K through five program, and I'm not sure if Mr. Powers is ready to make a recommendation one way or the other, but is to perhaps, you've heard some concerns, you know, go back and you can work with the administration. I would just suggest that, because, you know.
And on the choice issue, I would appreciate.
Yeah, I'm awful going back for that. You're preaching to the choir on that. That wasn't from a department perspective.
So who do we have to convince? Scott?
I'll talk to Scott again.
I have another comment, and it actually is related to the elementary level. Love the intramurals programs. I have heard from not just one, but several folks who said, "My challenge in, my kid wants to do the intramural programs, but my challenge is the transportation." And I'm sure you've heard that before. And, you know, I also know people that actually don't have vehicles, so the bus is critical, and they have a child that was dying to do an intramural. Have we ever thought about, like, the late bus concept? I mean, I know it's a little departure because it's elementary versus, you know, the middle and the high school, but we do have an awful lot of kids out there that, you know, that may be the deciding factor in not opting in. And, you know, we have working parents with babysitters home who can't pick up. I just wondered if that.
I don't know from a principal perspective. I know that we have some buildings that are almost 90% of the grades four and five that are involved. Why the other 10% to 20% are not that, I'm not sure. The elementary staff may, I don't know if Laurie might know, or Laura?
Well, I'm sure that there's, you know, not everybody would want to participate, per se, but the transportation, I think it's the expense is the primary reason.
Yeah.
Plus, we, here at Glenmont, for example, we house the English as a New Language program, so we have children from across the district, as well as for our skills class and some of our other special education programs. So to provide busing to each of the elementary schools for another shift, another route, would be, I think, extremely expensive for the district.
There's also the elementary intramurals are in the morning.
Yeah, they're at 8:30.
Oh, before school?
Yeah, so.
So a lot of parents can drop off. It's actually babysitting in some respects for them.
So to provide busing at that time with all the middle and high school runs would not be feasible.
And I think we need to remember that a few years ago, we actually cut intramurals, even the instructions, because we were so tight on the budget, so.
We used to actually be four days a week, three and four days a week in some buildings.
So just even the instructions had to be cut out.
And given the number of students who are involved in intramurals, I can't believe that parents couldn't find another parent who could transport if they're not able to.
There are some. Especially if you don't drive. There are families in our district that don't drive.
Fred, have you ever looked at desks, elementary desks that are a little bit higher and have a bar across, movable bar? I saw a classroom demonstrated like that, you know, where students actually were standing, elementary students stood at the desk, and they could move their, you know, you know how they like to move, move, you know, put their foot on the bar, and it kept moving, and they found that students were, you know, a lot more focused, and were also burning calories and being active at the same time.
During classroom instruction or in physical education?
Right, this would replace the classroom desks that are there now. It'd be higher desks where they were standing, with the bar. Jody has one in her office, kind of like that.
We can borrow Jody's.
Without the bar. I mean, a bar, not.
I think we're digressing here.
Anyhow, I don't know whether you've seen it, but I was really impressed with them. Obviously, it would be a huge expense to do that, but I just wondered whether you had looked at.
I hadn't looked at that, no. No. And it's not something that we obviously would use in a gymnasium, that would be, and maybe in classroom instruction. I do know that there was one class, I'm not sure what building it was in, but they replaced all the chairs with.
That was in Slingle. I think Ann Baker had a class like that.
A lot of the classrooms had those.
With the balls, with the huge balls that sat there.
Which is actually good for push stability.
Which is similar, you know, in movement. I just wondered if, because as I said, I saw it, and I was impressed, and they seemed, the people that were using them were very happy with them. But again, it's an expense to replace all the desks.
I will say, I've been impressed over the years at the kind of the innovation of the new equipment we're buying. I think when my daughter, at least, was in the middle school, they were doing archery, but they also did snow shoeing. I mean, it's nice that the department is, it's not just the same, you know, volleyball, nothing's anything wrong with volleyball, or basketball, or, you know, square dancing is what we used to do, but that there, you're looking at some new innovative things that kids can be introduced to, as you were saying, lifelong activities, so appreciate that.
Any other questions for Fred or?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Matt Kamen, Trump.
Yes.
For just a minute. With a report that I made earlier about the middle school character breakfast, I forgot to mention, and I just think this is really important. That it was sponsored by the Kiwanis, the PTO and the Kiwanis had worked together, there was a member of both, and Kiwanis really reached out and wanted to do this. They want to become more active in the community with the schools. And, you know, several members were there and did a great job, so I apologize for neglecting that before, but I think it's really important to mention.
We had mentioned that we would, at the breakfast, that we wanted to acknowledge their gratitude and thank them for sponsoring that. Besides the breakfast, there is a luncheon, that they do a pizza luncheon periodically to recognize the middle school students, and they also sponsor that, too. We want to thank them. At this time, we would recognize any visitors in the audience who would like to address the board on an agenda item. Item number eight. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items A through C.
So moved.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries? Next is professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items A through G.
So moved.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries? Support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items A through C.
So moved.
First and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries? Correspondence for action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence action items A through D.
So moved.
First and second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question on the trip to Montreal. Just, you know, in this day, especially with the, you know, with the explosions last week in Paris and whatever, that just to be watchful, whether the trip should take place at that time, if things are uneasy. The other thing is too, I believe you, well, you at least need that card, international card, or passport to get over the border. I mean, the bus has to.
Enhance license.
So everybody, but it's, so all the students need to have those.
Right, they go through all of that with the kids and the families, what they need to do in order to.
In all of our trips, we generally have, the companies offer an insurance piece, so if there's any issues with a trip, you can't go, then we're not held responsible for those.
I just want to appreciate Mr. Mitchell for being here, in case there were questions about the field, so I'll ask one, about the last school one. So you're going to Beckett, is this a new location for you?
Yeah, we looked at Beckett, Silver Bay, and Ginger Cove, and we were a little unhappy with Ginger Cove last year for a few reasons that aren't important. So we were looking at Silver Bay and Beckett for this year. I pulled the community, parents and students, provided information that showed Beckett, so they go in there.
No holidays this year?
What's that?
No holidays. It's not scheduled on a holiday this year?
I'm pretty sure it's not, but they, Beckett's been very flexible, capable to adjust anything, so I'm not too concerned.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries? At this time, the Board of Education would recognize any member of the audience that would like to address the board on a non-agenda item? No? Okay. Before we go on to future meetings, I just want to remind the community that there is an online survey that deals with the, our search for a new superintendent, permanent superintendent for the district. Encourage you to go out there and complete that online survey. And also, if you're interested in serving on a interview committee, there's an opportunity to reach out to our communications staff and let them know that. I believe the survey's online till November 29?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Future meetings, we have, the next meeting will, there's a policy meeting on Monday, November 30th, at 5:00 PM at the high school. After that, the first Wednesday of December, December 2nd, is our executive, we'll have an executive session starting at 5:00 PM with a regular open public meeting at 7:00 PM that will be at the high school. Next meeting after that is, we're going to meet on December 10th with Assemblywoman Fahy at 8:30 AM at the high school. Jody, that'll be at your office. Then there's a, next meeting after that is, there's a superintendent's evaluation committee meeting on December 14th at 4:30 PM. The committee will be meeting on that. And then the second Board of Education meeting for the month of December is December 16th. Anticipated start time of executive session at 6:00 PM, with a open meeting at 7:00 PM. That meeting will be held at Himmagirl Elementary School. We do not have a need to go into executive session. I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, so we'll. First and second. All in favor? Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.